Call to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners, the regular meeting July 20th, 2017. Welcome everybody, please join us for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, as the symbol of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
We did this on Tuesday, but I think it's okay to do it again. I wish you would sit with us for a moment of silence for the sheriff and his family. The sheriff lost his fatherless last week, so if you'll please bow your head in a moment of silence with us. Thank you very much. Okay, first item on the agenda is to approve the regular meeting agenda. Are there any changes ma'am?
No additional changes other than what was made in the work session.
Okay, Commissioners, do you see any changes? Can I get a motion to approve it?
A second.
A motion, a second to approve the agenda, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say in the box saying aye. Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. So at this time, the commission will stand for public input. Please raise your hand. Whichever one of you all want to go first.
Good morning Commissioners, before I get started, I have one request. Could you please, maybe if you can move your microphones closer, I really have a hard time hearing you. Thank you. Good morning, what I meant to say is I'm Donna Stevens, Director of the Upper Gila Watershed Alliance, a watershed protection nonprofit. There are three items on your agenda today that concern me, and I'd like to address each one of them really briefly. The first is the agreement with the USDA Wildlife Services, a euphemism of a name if ever there was one. In 2011, this agency killed 3.8 million animals. In fiscal year 2013, Wildlife Services admitted body count was over 4.3 million animals, representing dozens of species, including coyotes, beavers, prairie dogs, foxes, bobcats, black bears, cougars, and wolves. In 2015, they killed over 1.6 million native animals. They admitted to killing 17 domestic dogs, you know, people's pets. Former Wildlife Services employees estimate that fewer than half of the killings are actually reported, so that means these numbers are really much lower than they actually are. Taxpayers resent having our tax dollars spent to kill wildlife for a small special interest group. If ranchers are having problems with wildlife preying on their cattle, it would be far more cost-effective to compensate them directly for their losses, instead of spending tens of thousands of dollars on, just from Grant County, on taxpayer dollars to trap and poison wildlife that the majority of us are happy to share the land with. The second item I want to talk about is the New Mexico cap entity's amended joint powers agreement. In March of 2013, the Grant County Commission approved Resolution R. 1318 that states, and I quote, "Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Grant County Commissioners to support diverting, retaining, conveying, and recharging the aquifer within the borders of Grant County with waters available through the Arizona Water Settlements Act." I know that alternative facts are really popular these days, but this one is not, this is not a fabrication. This commission, including two commissioners who are still serving, voted to keep the Gila River's water within Grant County. The amended JPA is very troubling because it would approve the construction of a pipeline from Freeport McMoran's existing diversion to an undisclosed location, opening the door for Freeport, a global corporation, to profit from selling their unused water, either now or after the mines close eventually, transporting it in a pipeline built with public funds. Whenever we raise objections about this, the cap entity executive director says that our concerns are premature, that using Freeport's infrastructure is just being investigated. I understand that, but I submit that it's the responsibility of elected officials to consider the consequences, intended or unintended, of your decisions, and to err on the side of caution. The third item is the notice of intent to consider an ordinance authorizing the operation of OHVs on county roads. I urge the Commissioners to really think about the safety implications of this ordinance. And beyond that, I don't really understand the advantage of having OHVs on county roads. If it's to access the 3,300 miles of roads in the Gila National Forest, users are still going to have to trailer their OHVs to get to a county road unless they happen to live on one. It will be a difficult ordinance to enforce, and will put pressure on the city to reconsider having OHVs on city streets. I'm probably out of time, so I'll stop here. Thank you very much.
Go ahead Allison.
Good morning Chairman Kasten and Commissioners. I'm Allison Civic, Executive Director of the Gila Conservation Coalition. This morning, you will be voting on the amended joint powers agreement of the New Mexico cap entity to which Grant County is one of 14 members. Contrary to what was said at the commission's work session on Tuesday, the amended JPA gives the New Mexico cap entity authority to do more than just investigate Freeport's Bill Evans diversion infrastructure. The amended JPA gives the entity the authority to quote, I'm quoting from the JPA, the amended JPA, quote, "Obtain through lease, purchase, or other transfer mechanism the right to operate, manage, and/or utilize water resources and infrastructure currently owned by Freeport McMoran, Inc." The entity's executive director, Anthony Gutierrez, explained to you at Tuesday's work session how acquisition of the Bill Evans diversion reservoir and pipeline, along with the ability to lease and/or purchase existing water rights, will give the cap entity the means to become a regional water authority, to lease, purchase, and sell water rights outside of Grant County, potentially to Demming, Luna County, or other water users outside of southwestern New Mexico. First, as Donna said, approval of the amended JPA is in direct conflict with the commission's 2013 resolution to keep water in Grant County as part of the Arizona Water Settlements Act. The resolution states that the Board of Grant County Commissioners supports diverting, retaining, conveying, and recharging the aquifer within the borders of Grant County. If you go back and watch the video from March 11th, 2013, from that special meeting, Commissioners Kasten, Hall, and Ramos all supported keeping Gila River water in Grant County. That was a very long special meeting, lots of conversation, lots of public input on this particular point. But acquisition of the Bill Evans infrastructure creates a system that will allow the cap entity to become a regional water authority and export Gila River water outside of our region to Demming and Luna County, as Mr. Gutierrez told you on Tuesday. Why is this problematic? In addition to being inconsistent with Resolution R. 1318, the cap entity's vision creates a vehicle by which Freeport's thousands of acre-feet of surface and groundwater that it currently doesn't use or won't use in the future when the mines play out, that this water could be exported out of the region, potentially to the Rio Grande Basin. This will impact irrigators on the Gila River and the water security of communities in the member's basin. So Freeport owns 63,000 acre-feet of water rights in southwestern New Mexico, the largest water rights holder in this area. This data comes from a report done by AMEC for the Interstate Stream Commission and the AWSA Stakeholders Group back in 2010. This is not new information. In any given year, the mines are only using a fraction of that water, anywhere between 10% and 14%, depending upon production levels. That's in the recent past. When the mines close, the company is going to be looking to sell water that it no longer needs. And the Bill Evans infrastructure and conveyance system to Demming, as is currently contemplated by the cap entity, provides the means for Freeport to sell or lease and deliver its water to communities outside our region. On the Gila River in particular, Freeport owns nearly 12,000 acre-feet of water. Piping all or a portion of that water over the Continental Divide to Luna County or the Rio Grande would have severe impacts on valley irrigators and to the Gila River's ecology. I said to each of the Commissioners some testimony that had been made by former Deputy Director of the Interstate Stream Commission Craig Repke, where he actually testified to a conversation with El Staje, which is now Freeport McMoran, to an idea, a scheme that would use AWSA funding to acquire the Bill Evans infrastructure, so they could potentially take 4,300 to 6,600 acre-feet of Tyrone Mine groundwater, as well as its Gila River water, and export that water. And, they said, you know, that could go to Cabayo Reservoir and use to meet demand or compact obligations as the ISC shows. In closing, today's vote on the New Mexico cap entity's JPA has huge implications for our region. It's more than just studying a new alternative. As Commissioner Ramos said on Tuesday, this decision will shape how water is managed for our region for decades to come and the water security of our area. Thank you very much.
Further public input?
Yes, my name is Andy Payne, I'm a resident of Grant County. Good morning. I'm here to add my voice to those many people, and I know, who think the amendment to the JPA is a bad idea, so please vote no on that. It's a classic mission creep after the cap has failed at their original goal. Interstate streamers, in their 10 years come up with a plan for the Gila River diversion, they had no viable plan. When their timeline ran out, they handed this response go to the cap and said, "See what you can do with $100 million." They still have no viable plan. So now cap wants to partner with a mining company whose sole purpose for existence is to make profit for its owners, so that the cap can pump some water somewhere, so it looks like they're accomplishing something. The risk is too high that in partnering with Freeport McMoran, the profit motive will take over, and our Gila water will be sold and pumped out of our region to the highest bidder. So please don't allow the cap entity the power to do that. And, after voting no on this amendment today, I would like to see you vote to withdraw from the cap entity entirely. By remaining a member, you all appear to be condoning this boondoggle, which is wasting millions of our tax dollars, which is only tarnishing your good names. Thank you.
He's been no four times.
Good morning, my name is Weteo Lopez, I live in Silver City. I'm the founder of the Protectors of the Gila River in New Mexico. We are an indigenous alliance organization that works in hand with indigenous people in Arizona and in Texas protecting water rights and our environment. I am heavily involved with keeping track of what's going on with cap entity and the diversion of the Gila River. And I'm here today with my children in support of other members in the community to encourage you to vote no on the amendment here today, to support the cap entities entering into discussion with Freeport. In 2013, I was here at that meeting, and I also spoke and disagreed with the cap entity's partnership, what I call, in support of that entity's taking control of our water in our community. And I could understand when certain Commissioners said that, "I'm doing this only to keep the water in our community." But now, they're turning around and saying, "Well, we're not changing anything, we're just opening discussions." Well, you don't sit at a table with a powerhouse like Freeport, a global powerhouse like Freeport, to discuss what, making peanut butter jelly sandwiches. When you sit down at a table with that kind of a corporation, there's serious talk about money and resources going back and forth there. And so, that's not just a simple discussion. You're changing your original language and your support in 2013 of the cap entity today to allow them to gain more power and say over our water rights in this community. One thing I said back then, and I'll continue to say that nobody wants to say, I even heard the former director of the ISC in a radio interview with Allison Civic on our local radio station here, and they couldn't come to the conclusion as to why. They can't figure out why the cap entity continues to push for this power of control and domination of our water. Even at the risk of just insane spending this money and not having a plan, not following through the plan, trying to change directions with the plans, the one thing I said is that one thing is to just, it's a payoff. And in the end, there will be no infrastructure, there will be no planned follow-through. The second thing is, I was heavily involved with the Food Policy Council for many years in this community, my wife was the co-chair during that time, underneath the umbrella of the county commission, we were oversaw, they oversaw our decision-making with regard to food policy. There was a group of ranchers who came in with Anthony Gutierrez at the time, and were discussing the building of a slaughterhouse in this community, because they were upset that they were having to travel to Texas and travel to Arizona to slaughter their cattle. You need major water to run a slaughterhouse. I come from Los Angeles, I worked in a slaughterhouse, I delivered to slaughterhouses. It is nothing fun and nice for a community. They want to turn this community and what it looks like off the 10 freeway in Mesquite and Anthony, New Mexico. That's why they want to pump the water from Bill Evans over to Demming and Luna County. They are having closed private meetings about building a slaughterhouse here, and the Icofs, a millionaire family from the East Coast who run cattle out of, just outside of town here, are at the helm of this. They were the ones who were sitting in the Food Policy Council meeting that day. We shut them down so bad, Anthony Gutierrez called the sheriff on us, the meeting broke up, and Brett Kasten pulled the cap's community television cameras out of our meeting from that point forward, because we were taking on the ranchers and their attempt to control the water in this community for the building of that slaughterhouse. That is the long-range view that these ranchers want, these handful of ranchers want to do with our community water. So I'll continue to say that, please vote no today, there's a danger ahead. That was a pipeline view, and I'm sharing that with you now. There's a severe danger in this community of a handful of people wanting to pollute our community and use water to destroy our livelihoods here. So please vote no today, do not enter into negotiations with a powerhouse like Freeport, and please, please watch what this cap entity is doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Claudia Durk, and I'm a resident of the Gila Valley. The purpose of my statement today is an attempt to convey to the commission, also known as our representatives, that it is now time to take a serious look at the New Mexico cap entity and the revised joint powers agreement that you are being asked to sign on our behalf. The whole purpose for which this entity was formed was to accomplish the construction of a diversion on the Gila River. This diversion plan was implemented as a means for storage of up to 14,000 acre-feet of water that was allotted to us in New Mexico as a result of the Arizona Water Settlements Act. Three years have passed, not to mention the decade prior to the money beginning to flow. Millions of dollars of public money is now in the pockets of consultants, engineers, and lawyers. The group is no more certain today about what they plan to do than when they started. There's no longer a diversion plan, or at least they're not talking about it, and there is no longer any plans for utilization of that 14,000 acre-feet of water, as far as we know. Instead, we're hearing now about a small project in the Gila Valley for 50 private landowners who've already been awarded $1.25 million, the Arizona Water Settlements money, which is public funds, to subsidize the furtherance of their freely chosen way of life. I believe we will learn that this small project in the Gila Valley is going to have a $10 million price tag. I've pointed out to the New Mexico cap entity board through the use of factual Census Bureau and state data that agriculture is no longer on the top of the economic heap in Grant County. It is not now, and it will not be in the future. It is actually an economic drain to those of us who earn our livings by other means. In the months ahead, people are going to hear and learn just how much of a financial hindrance to progress agriculture is in this area of New Mexico. How can the Grant County Commission justify the fact that many worthy projects were denied funding, and now the New Mexico cap is arbitrarily considering funding for two projects that have nothing to do with the diversion, that they were created to construct and oversee? If Luna County wants to partner with Freeport McMoran for utilization of the mine's adjudicated water, they don't need the New Mexico cap entity to do that. All they need to do is to utilize Luna County's share of the monetary award and move forward with the plan with Freeport McMoran. And believe me, the Interstate Stream Commission is more than capable to oversee those plans. We have learned at Tuesday's gathering that the long-range plan of this entity is to become the water masters for the southwest planning region, the result of which will be to add another regulatory layer of government bureaucracy that will most likely require tax funding to support it. Grant County needs to sever its alliance with the New Mexico unit of the Central Arizona Project before it costs us, your constituents, one more die. Thank you very much.
Further public input? Mr. Minus?
Yes, my name is Richard Minus, and I've been advocating for the use of off-road I have been doing this for quite a while, I've done research, and I also want to commend Mrs. Alicia Edwards for having that little distance session. Thank you Alicia, that you have concerns and all that, you know. And we do agree to disagree. But I want to make a little statement about the people in Grant County, that we grew up with hunting, fishing, camping, in all these beautiful, in our beautiful forests. And one special I want to express about the family, our children. We have to, and we have accountability and a responsibility to get our children together, our families together. By utilizing these vehicles, we can go unite the family, the family structure. We need, and we are accountable for our families, and not only the commission, but everybody. You know, we have a responsibility for families, to unite them in a beautiful, special way. And with these vehicles, you know, I've been to the, to the, to the, to all these campgrounds, and I see families in their ATVs side-by-side enjoying and gathering together, and it's beautiful. And we have a responsibility for our families, to make our families stronger and closer. It seems it's a dying, it's a dying breed, because we're not, we're not engaging as parents and with our children. And I just wanted to express this, that our children, we're responsible for them. And with these little machines, it's a lot of fun. They make four-seaters, six-seaters, all you do is just drive around, enjoy the forest, go fishing, hunting, camping, and keeping the family structure together. It'll help, you know, in certain ways. And I just wanted to express that, you know, that it's not a bad thing. I researched that these machines, they're safe and everything, you know, but I want to convey to people, you know, but people don't understand, you know, they want to use their own, instead of tax, they use their personal opinion, you know, their personal judgment, and they haven't even known, they don't know what it is, how it is. I've been growing up for seven years, and I've been on disability for 17 years, and it's, we, I'm 63 years old, I've had two heart attacks, I enjoy the wilderness. There's people that are sick, like I said before, you know, getting the allergies, or people can't walk, people, old age people that want to embrace the forest, embrace our fishing and camping and all that. And these little machines, and people do a lot of woodcutting, and this helps us to, helps us, you know, to make it easier for us. But the main thing is keeping families together, and with these machines, you know, maybe unite the family and our children, and get them involved in this instead of cell phone, they're always on the cell phone, and get them out there, get them out there, and experience, drive around, explore with your machines, and enjoy the county roads. But it's not that I'm saying that, we do pay, we do pay appropriately taxes and all this. I worked for the county nine years. We have beautiful, safe roads. So I just wanted to express that, that our families, our kids, and these machines will help us get together and enjoy the wilderness. Thank you.
Thank you. We usually let everybody finish, because we don't want to get into a debate here. You saw him attack me twice. Trust me, it's just better. Okay, it's better to have your statement at the end. Okay, who would like to be next? In the back there.
Good morning Commissioners, and thanks for serving. My name is Pete Rankin, I'm a resident of Grant County. I've been a resident of New Mexico for 30 years. I'm here to speak on about two items on your agenda today. The first one is, I'll briefly talk about, is the off-road, or the highway motor vehicle resolution. I live in Penaltos, and frequently people ride off-highway vehicles in our region, and most users are sick, but it's the ones who are not safe that I have great concerns about. I have a 10-year-old daughter, and there have been many times where I've had to flag people down and say, "Slow down, this is a residential area." The second reason that I would ask you, besides safety, to vote against this resolution is the impact on wildlife. I've been hunting and fishing in New Mexico for 30 years, since 1987. My family moved here when I was 13. And the impacts on wildlife are significant from increased use of these vehicles. The second item I would like to speak about is the amended joint powers. The second item I would like to speak about is the amended joint powers agreement. Previous speakers have spoke eloquently in detail about the nuts and bolts of this agreement, and why to vote against it, and why I request you to vote against it today, but, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the big picture. A little history is noteworthy. I went to Farmington High School, I taught at Farmington High School for 10 years before moving to Grant County. One of the reasons I moved here is because of the wildlife habitat and the hunting and fishing opportunities in this region. And I hunted on Colorado, I told around Farmington, and fished up there, and that, the habitat up there has been greatly impacted by fracking, by prioritizing another of our natural resources. And the, I started applying for permits to hunt in the Gila 15 years ago, and I fell in love with it, and that's why I'm here. The unintended impacts of the diversion, the giant pipeline coming over the Colorado area, over the continental river are, I believe, tremendous, and I believe that they will greatly impact habitat here. And it is also for privatizing another of New Mexico's private, amazing resources, and that is our water and the Gila River in particular. The justification for the diversion in general is economic growth, and is supplying this water for economic growth. And that is, in privatizing this resource for economic growth, another bit of history, I went to college in northern Colorado, and 20 years ago when I was there, the big item on the agenda was another diversion, it was the Animal-Salwater Project. And the, that was again, to water rights, economic growth, and the region's basin reservoir that was created as a part of that diversion has destroyed some of the best low-elevation elk habitat in southwestern Colorado. And 20 years ago, when there were discussions in La Plata County, southwestern Colorado, the same justifications for the project, economic growth, otherwise known as the ideology of a cancer cell grow until you destroy your resource base. And the unintended impact of that project was to destroy some, this habitat. And so I'm here today to speak on behalf of, or as a hunter and a fisherman, to protect this precious resource. Don't get lost in the weeds of this, and at whatever opportunity, please vote against diverging our Gila River, so. Thank you again for serving and for your time.
Thank you. Further public input?
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair, and thank you so much for allowing public input. My name is Janet Rollit Ortiz, and I've been a resident of Grant County for over 30 years. I have two items to speak to you about today. One is that I insist you vote against the amended JPA for two specific reasons. One, it's the classic corporate benefit versus citizens' rights to basic needs, in this case, water. Water for drinking, water for recreation, water for a healthy environment. Anthony Gutierrez has been quoted as saying that water is a commodity, and what you do with commodities, you sell it. So this means that basically he is involved in this, and certainly many are involved in this for the profit motive, without realizing the damage that it will do, or maybe even with realizing the damage it will do to our environment and to our water resources. It is hypocritical for this body to reverse the stance from Resolution 1318, and a betrayal of your responsibility to us, your constituents. Leave the Gila River alone. I'm also here to ask you to please vote against the OHV on county roads ordinance, for safety reasons, for excessive noise reasons, and OHVs are notorious for the environmental damage they do. While certainly many people with OHV vehicles are responsible, there are some that are not, and it would be completely economically impossible to watch the roads and make sure that people were following the regulations that they need to, to keep these vehicles and other people using those roads safe. So please vote against the amended JPA and vote against the OHV legalizing on county roads. Thank you.
Speak your name, please.
Good morning. My name is Carol Figali, and I am a resident of Silver City. In March of 2016, Governor Martinez signed a bill that would allow local communities to decide whether all train vehicles or ATVs and off-highway vehicles, OHVs, can drive on their county paved roads. The author of this bill was Senator Minority Caucus Chair Steve Neville, and he stated, "This is intended for farmers who might be on an ATV and need to travel on a paved road to get to their fields down the road without being sighted. We don't want to penalize people carrying out their daily jobs and duties. We want to make sure people have some freedom to get their jobs done." Now, I was born and raised in rural Nebraska, and I also lived as a farmer and a livestock owner in the Gila Cliff Valley for 15 years, so I do understand the demands of this kind of lifestyle. I support the original intent of the bill in Grant County so farmers can work with ease. However, the way the ordinance is currently written, the targeted beneficiaries are not included, and it gives a very high degree of latitude for misinterpretation. First of all, the ordinance is limited to OHVs with non-straddle seating. This type of vehicle is known as utility task vehicle, or UTV, often referred to as a side-by-side due to the seating arrangement in which at least two people can sit side-by-side. Thus, as currently written, the ordinance would exclude any farmer with a straddle seating vehicle, which includes all ATVs, from utilizing the intended benefits of the bill. There are many farmers who own ATVs and not side-by-sides. Now, it is possible that some people want to extrapolate the original bill and create an ordinance for recreational enthusiasts, specifically those outside the area, so they can take their side-by-side vehicle and drive on the county-maintained roads. This ordinance leads to a great deal of confusion as to which roads can be used for this purpose. Many people, especially those not from this area, may think that all of the paved roads in Silver City would be included, since they are roads in the county, when in fact, most of these roads are excluded. Since the UTVs are not designed to drive on paved roads, clear language is not used in the ordinance for the vehicles to be road-ready. This means they would need to be modified and equipped with proper headlights, taillights, blinkers, mirrors, mufflers, corn slices plates, and insurance. Once the vehicle is road-ready and passes inspection, each driver would need to understand the rules of the road and would need to be safety-conscious. Most states require drivers to attend a hands-on safety training course so they know the standard safety procedures of driving the vehicles. They also would need to understand which roads they are allowed to drive on and which ones they aren't. In addition, this ordinance allows these vehicles to be up to 80 inches in width, not including accessories. This contradicts the 50-inch vehicle width limit currently in place for motorized trails in the Gila National Forest. So it would be illegal for an individual to drive their 70-inch side-by-side from a county road onto a motorized road in the forest. This size disparity is significant, and if illegally driven on national forest motorized trails, it could cause major vegetation damage as well as damage to the road itself. Since we only have two law enforcement officers in the Gila National Forest, this width limit would nearly be impossible to enforce. I continue with Steve Neville's words concerning the reasoning for adopting the original bill in individual counties, and he quotes, "Local governments should use this authority sparingly, and only after careful consideration of the community's needs and the risks associated with OHV use." And I conclude, this ordinance is not designed to assist local farmers as the bill was originally intended, and so the intended user is largely excluded. The wording is entirely too vague, and leaves the door wide open for misinterpretation and confusion. This ordinance would pose a safety risk to all travelers, as well as put an increased burden on our law enforcement officers. Please do not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public input? One more chance. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is minutes. Approve or disapprove the June 13th work session minutes, the June 15th regular minutes, and the June 29th special meeting minutes?
As opposed.
Motion to approve the June 13th work session, the June 15th regular, and the June 29th special meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. Linda, are you done? I was missing you for a second. Okay, can you go over the, the expense report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have an expenditure report for approval totaling $3,498,016.14. And included in this are several AP checks, which total $3,55,342.4. There's a check to Ascend Aviation in the amount of $14,633.80 for June fuel and AV gas. There is also a check to Ascend Aviation in the amount of $17,812. This is also for June fuel, a check in the amount of 46, I'm sorry, $14,633.80, this is for May fuel, and check in the amount of $16,350.40 for July fuel. There's a check to Bank of Albuquerque in the amount of $238,208.23, and this is for the debt service for the GRT revenue bonds. A check to Computer Assets in the amount of $12,427.76, and this is for a camera system and accessories for dispatch. A check to Creative Bus Sales in the amount of $24,736.37, and this is for a shuttle bus for Corte Caminos. A check to Fuel Center Plus in the amount of $15,368.56, and this is for off-road diesel fuel for the road department. A check in the amount of $93,239.60, and this is to the Grant County Manager's Office from Corte Caminos, and this is for the administrative fees for the fiscal agent billing. A check to HCP Systems in the amount of $28,845.94, and this is for the May and June medical management services at the detention center. A check to Morrow Enterprises in the amount of $200,021.83, and this is a construction progress payment for the North Hurley Road Colonia's project. A check to the New Mexico State Land Office in the amount of $135,373.34 for the mineral royalties at the gravel pit. A check to the New Mexico State University in the amount of $17,000, and this is for the fourth quarter contribution for the extension service. A check to ACOM Engineers in the amount of $30,865.32, and this is for engineering services on the Colonia's projects. A check to Performance Breaking Incorporated in the amount of $15,552, and this is for excavating services at Tucasa. A check to Professional Document Systems in the amount of $23,906.13, and this is for the Novus Agenda software and microfiche. A check to Rich Ford in the amount of $39,884.1, and this is for a police utility vehicle and equipment for that vehicle. A check to Shamrock Foods Company in the amount of $11,657.56, and this is for foods for D.C.R. programs. A check to Southwest Concrete and Paving in the amount of $21,882.25, and this is for hot mix for the road special projects. A check to Southwest Solid Waste Authority in the amount of $45,612.89, and this is for the main tipping fees. A check to Submit from Services in the amount of $45,369.80, and this is for the April and May inmate meals. A check to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $40,730.2, and this is for the software renewal for fiscal year 1718. A check to White Sands Construction in the amount of $242,924.62, and this is the construction progress payment for Tucasa. And a check to Wright Express Fleet Services in the amount of $24,875.61, and this is for the main fuel charges. And also included in the expenditure report is payroll checks for Payperiod 12 and 13, totaling $442,674.10. Any questions?
Any questions? Is Linda on the expenditure report?
I just want to say thank you for the email you sent detailing the report that you just read. It was easy for me to follow along with, with that. I don't know if all the Commissioners are getting those or they want them, but...
Probably can just include that in the packet if it's easy enough to do.
It was sure easy for me, thanks.
Can I add to that idea? Sure. I've long felt... Some ideas on that. But we should let me and Linda do this twice. I feel like it's exactly the kind of thing we should do on Tuesday at our work session. When I watch the crowd during your presentation, I see people leave and fall asleep, and they don't love numbers like I do. Well said. And, you know, if you're preparing these emails for us, perhaps we could include with the agenda a list of those checks so that the public still has access to that information, but they don't have to wait for that verbal report, but... Would be my latest iteration of my request. I mean, it's, it's, we've always done it, not so much for the people here, but for the people on CATS, and, and they don't get to see that statement. But it's up to the commission. If you only want to hear it once, I'll only have Linda read it once, so think about it and kind of let me know.
I think once is sufficient. I need your meeting, I don't care which meeting.
Okay. Perhaps with a revised, improved website, we could even include it there for folks who watch on CATS. Okay? Give it that, and we'll just do it at the work sessions from now on, and you feel include that in our packet. All right?
Mr. Chairman, I have a similar request that I think was saved a little bit of time. I think all of your packets maybe were left here because there was a, some work needed to be done on because of the exclusion of item F. I took my packet home because I needed to go over it, and so I have actually, so your packets were all redone, and item F was excluded, and G was moved to F, H to G, and so forth. I think that took a lot of, my suggestion, that that may have taken a lot of work, but we could have just blocked out item F.
Or called it F1, or...
Yeah, so I'm still, mine wasn't outdated, and I don't have a problem with that, and it's just as easy for me to follow along.
Mine's the same as yours.
Okay.
We are getting closer day by day to having the Novus Agenda, having that done electronically. It'll be much simpler, and that's easier. It'll just, and everything will...
She thinks it's going to be easier. Wait till they try to teach you something.
Be attentive.
Old dogs.
Intentional group. Okay, thanks.
Either way, can I get a motion to approve that expenditure report?
So...
All those in favor, say five, say aye. Motion passes. New business, approve or disapprove the proclamation declaring July 22nd through, July 30th, 2017, as Clay Festival Week? Bernadette, can you read that for us?
This is the board. Whereas 2017 represents the sixth year that the Silver City Arts and Cultural District will present its signature event known as the Silver City Clay Festival. And whereas the Clay Festival provides many recreational and educational activities, including workshops, lectures, tours, exhibits, and demonstrations... workshops, lectures, tours, exhibits, and demonstrations. And whereas the Clay Festival holds several fundraising events to assist in its ongoing efforts to foster an entrepreneurial spirit that engages local businesses, artists, and the global community, and a unified enthusiasm for clay leading to rural economic sustainability. And whereas visitors from all over the United States, Canada, and Europe come to southwestern New Mexico to experience how clay, earth, and the mud in their many forms embody and evoke the history of New Mexico. Now therefore, the governing body of the County of Grant does hereby proclaim July 22nd through July 30th, 2017 as Clay Festival Week, and urges all citizens to participate in activities that commemorate this event.
Bernadette? Is anybody here representing the Clay Festival today? Okay, so I'd take a motion to approve the proclamation?
So...
Motion is second to approve the, the proclamation declaring the 22nd through the 30th as Clay Festival Week. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I'd just like to encourage everyone to, if they still offer that western, that clay spinning class, it's so fun and, and relaxing to do that type of work, so, I mean, take those classes if you can. It's just a lot of fun.
Further discussion?
I'm looking forward to dealing. I'm hoping we can call it New Mexico Hold'em, but, uh, looking forward to dealing at the event on the 29th.
I have a full set of book with chips fried. Look forward to seeing you there, then. It's not my favorite game. I call it Texas Hold'em. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say five, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove of, um, the Second Amendment to Agreement A 1522 between the County of Grant and the High Desert Humane Society? What about one? It's intriguing to see it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this is to, um, amend the term of the agreement for another year. None of the other, um, there is no, uh, increase in, um, fees or any of, any of that. It's just to extend this for another year till June 30th, 2018. Everything else will remain the same.
Okay. Amendment to Agreement A 1522 between Grant County and the High Desert Humane Society, assuming that the typo has been corrected. There's a motion is second to approve A 1522. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say five, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A 1720, Agreement with USDA Animal Plant Health Inspection Service Wildlife Services for 2018, uh, work plan program. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion. We approve Agreement Number A 17-20.
A second. A motion is second to approve A 1720. Discussion on the motion?
I have some comments.
Sure.
So, um, there's two things on this, uh, agreement that, one is that it doesn't seem to include deer as a nuisance wildlife, um, and I think that, uh, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm in favor of shooting them, but they are nuisance wildlife, and I think if we're gonna, um, if we need these services, we certainly need them for deer. And then the other thing is, um, according to the Las Cruces District, um, uh, 2017 Grant County Annual Report, the total verified loss value of animals that were, um, uh, predated on, so predation on calves, was $1,608.1. And according to my calculator, that means it's costing the taxpayers $14.93 per dollar of verified loss. And so, um, I would be much more in favor of taking the $24,000 and finding some way of reimbursing, uh, ranchers for their losses directly from those funds rather than, um, supporting this, uh, work plan.
Further discussion?
Well, I'd just point out that the problem with, um, verified losses is it's, it's almost impossible to, to establish that, so, so you know you have losses, but to, to report and make it a verified loss is, uh, is too onerous on, on the people who are losing animals.
So my thought on that, Commissioner, is that, so, um, earlier in the document, um, it says assign one wildlife specialist for 12 staff months averaging 624 hours per year. That's 12 hours a week. So we're not getting a lot of bang for our buck here, um, and my thought would be that the rancher themselves, and, you know, I don't know a lot about this all met up front, but if the rancher themselves is verifying the loss, so in other words, if you have a loss and, um, can bring that to someone, and I don't know who this would be, but let's just say, you know, it's somebody in the county, and, um, you can verify that loss, photographs, whatever it is, and the value of that animal, it just seems like you would, you as it were not you specifically, but you as a rancher would be able to better verify your loss than someone that we're paying 12 hours a week to cover such a huge amount of territory.
You done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thanks for the discussion.
Um, I have some questions, and I don't know if we can answer them here, so, uh, my first question is going to be, is it possible to get a presentation on this program from the person who's actually doing it, so that we can ask that person questions?
I intend to have him come make a presentation. It's taken me two and a half years to get this report to put in front of you, so I can request that he come and make a presentation on the program. My success in other areas of the state of this program has been much easier to deal with than it has been in this area, but I, I can make that request for them to come and give you a presentation in the future, so you understand it.
Is that because he's just not around very often, as sort of Alicia was alluding to?
No, the person I deal with is out of Las Cruces who oversees this particular district, so I can make that request. That's all I can tell you.
All right. So the kind of question I would want to ask, uh, is do we use M44 cyanide bombs as part of this process? My understanding is that's standard procedure for AFIS. Uh, there's a National Geographic article that came out just this last April, April 20th, uh, in which, uh, they talk about humans who've, uh, no one's died yet, but who have been injured by these M44s, currently 18, uh, humans, and more than 1,100 dogs have been killed between 2000 and 2012. I don't know if those were all domestic dogs, if some of them may have been feral, uh, but these M44s in particular sound indiscriminate and dangerous, uh, and I would like to know whether we use them here.
I can ask that question and have that answered for you.
Okay. Uh, and then, uh, I would have cost efficiency questions as well, as I do about so much else. I think one response to what you said, Commissioner Edwards, is that, uh, presumably this program is reducing wildlife depredation of livestock, in which case, the real question is by how much would it go up? Right? If you're talking about paying ranchers for their losses, the question isn't what are the losses now with the program in place? It's what would the losses be if we eliminated the program? I suspect you're still right, but I would love to explore that question.
And I don't, I don't inherently have an issue with, um, you know, compensating ranchers for their losses. What I have an issue with, as, as the information that I have in front of me, is it seems like a very inefficient way to address the issue, so...
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to name one argument. Part of the funding that goes towards this is the Taylor Grazing Act, and it does not allow for reimbursement to ranchers for their losses. It is fairly specific as to what you can use that for, and reimbursement for their losses is not one of them.
Do you know how much of that, so you're saying that a portion of the $24,000 comes from that? Do you know what portion?
Well, I think, I think you're saying a portion of the federal money comes from that.
Taylor Grazing Fund has come into this fund, which pays for a portion of this program. It is...
But I assume it pays for the federal portion?
It comes directly to us.
It pays for the body portion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is a federal act, but we get so many dollars per acre. It's another one of the little formulas that you would probably enjoy looking at.
I would. Because you're not usually allowed to use federal money to match federal money.
I just want to clarify that we're not matching federal money. It pays for everything on this deal.
Costs paid by federal appropriations. It says $57,000 paid by federal appropriations.
But the federal Taylor Grazing Act monies is distributed directly to us and to this fund that we pay for part of this out of. Those federal Taylor Grazing Act funds cannot be utilized for reimbursement to ranchers. I just wanted to clarify that a portion of this cannot be used for reimbursement to ranchers for their losses.
And we don't know what that portion is.
I can't tell you.
Exactly, right, right. So, of the detailed related things, uh, in Section 4 of this agreement, the activities under this effort are limited to the County of Sierra, which is fine with me, but I don't think that's what's intended.
And it expires a month ago.
That was my next question. Uh, this can't happen unless we have agreement by June 30th of this year. Are those things that are just easily changeable? I mean, I assume the Sierra is, but the date seemed like a real thing. No?
I'm simply incorrect. The typo, we can say...
It seems, okay, it just seemed like more than a typo. It seems like they actually had a deadline and we missed it, but that's not true.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve A 1720. All those in favor, say five, say no.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, uh, nays?
Nays.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove professional services agreement between Grant County Juvenile Probation and the following contractors? A 1721, Gary Staley, and A 1722, James Graham. Can I get a motion to approve?
Should I make the motion? We approve the professional service agreement?
I'll second that motion. Is that open?
They're under one.
They're under one.
One agreement. I've got them with two tabs, but, okay.
Well, those two are under one, and then there's two more under one.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion is second to approve Agreement Number A 1721 and A 1722. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, I just want to say that, um, having worked with Gary Staley at the Volunteer Center for a long time, and his, um, group of young folks, um, I don't know how many of you have been by the Commons recently, but, um, it's pretty amazing what's happening there, and everything you see there, all the fruit trees, the greenhouse, everything that is happening there, uh, was essentially created by Gary Staley and this program, so, um, I think the work that he is doing under the auspices of this program is, uh, one of the, the, um, best things that's happening with youth in this county, and I would just like to really give a shout out to Gary and all the folks he works with, and Bianca.
Gary, I'd like to amend my, my motion to approve professional services for Agreement A 1721 and A 1722.
Okay. Time is second?
I say second. That's what I am saying. And just back from the...
Francis Vazquez is in the crowd, and she and the committee gave Gary Sisachávez Award this year for that work. It's awesome.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say five, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove professional services agreement between Grant County Surveillance Program and the following contractors? This is Agreement A 1723 and Agreement A 1724 for Felix Ortega and Luis Alvarado.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the professional service agreements between, uh, both professional agreements, A 1723 and A 1724.
Second.
So motion is second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say five, say no. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A 1725? This is the amended joint powers agreement to the New Mexico cap entity?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion. We approve Agreement Number A 17-25.
I'll second.
So motion is second to approve the Agreement A 1725? Is there any discussion? Who wants to go first?
Carrie.
Some of you in the crowd on this commission may be aware that an Italian grilling there currently has a proposal before the New Mexico State Engineer to pump and ship 54,000 acre-feet of water per year out of Catron County to the highest bidder anywhere between Albuquerque and El Paso. An organization of which I am treasurer currently represents a number of ranching families who are fighting this proposal. They understandably fear the effect of draining this much water on their own wells and livelihoods. And in a broader sense, they fear the effect on the sustainability of ranching and farming in general if water becomes a commodity to be mined and shipped away. I bring this up because it strikes me, this proposed amendment is the first step on a slippery slope that could land Grant County in a similar predicament. Despite what was reported in yesterday's newspaper, the proposed amendment does not stop at authorizing the New Mexico cap entity to investigate the possibility of using Freeport's infrastructure to move water out of the Gila Valley. In four different places, it clearly authorizes the cap entity to quote, "obtain through lease, purchase, or other transfer mechanism, water resources and infrastructure currently owned by FMI." It goes on to authorize the cap entity to use money from the New Mexico Unit Fund, quote, "for the operation, management, and/or utilization of such water resources and infrastructure." We are not just considering a study. At Tuesday's work session, the cap entity's executive officer, Anthony Gutierrez, acknowledged that this amendment would not result in any new water resources for Grant County. It's just too expensive to use the Bill Evans diversion structure and the lake to take water available to us from the Arizona Water Settlements Act. And Freeport has apparently made clear that it has no interest in getting tied up in that whole ball of red tape either. So we're not considering this amendment as part of an effort to develop new water resources. This leaves only one purpose for this amendment, to take water out of the Gila Valley and ship it somewhere else. Where would it go, one wonders? Call me a cynic, but I believe in the saying that water will flow uphill toward money. I see no reason to view this project as an exception to that rule. If we are lucky, our friends and neighbors in Loma County will be able to purchase the water to provide for more farming and ranching there. But they may well find themselves in competition with bean growers or housing developers in Verena County, or even with the Interstate Stream Commission itself, which may well be required by federal courts to purchase water to send it to El Paso to meet New Mexico's obligations under the Rio Grande Compact. Texas is currently suing us, and if they win, the pressure to transport water from the Gila or Catron County to Elephant Beard or Caballo will be huge. Do we really want to pave the way for that to happen? What started out as a misguided and wasteful effort to accomplish something good, providing more water to Grant County, is now being distorted into a misguided and wasteful effort to allow private water owners to reduce the water available here by selling it elsewhere. This is governmental mission creep at its worst. An agency established for one purpose finds that purpose largely infeasible and casts about for some other justification for its existence. There are millions of dollars in legal, engineering, and staffing expenses still out there for the grabbing, and the cap entity is positioning itself to continue its parasitic existence for a long time. I urge my fellow commissioners to reject this amendment, to hold the cap entity to its original purpose, and to defend Grant County's water resources from water profiteers. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, any?
So, um, I'd just like to acknowledge, um, the comments from the audience. Many of you said, um, a lot of this probably much better than I can, but, um, from the beginning, um, the justification of the cap entity and the diversion project has been to keep Grant County water in Grant County and secure the water future of our children, grandchildren, and their children. I cannot tell you how many times I have heard that statement used in defense of the diversion. The cemented JPA is in direct opposition to that specific goal for several reasons. The first is that it specifically authorizes the cap entity to spend AWSA money to send nearly $2 billion gallons of Gila Valley water out of Grant County per year. nearly two billion gallons of Gila Valley water out of Grant County per year. For perspective, that's enough water to supply every person in the four-county region eighty gallons per day. That money could and should be spent on any or all of the local projects proposed, such as the regional water system that would directly benefit our children and grandchildren, and this agreement specifically excludes those projects from being considered. In case you're wondering what that looks like, what it looks like to separate that much water from the land, I'm going to tell you a little personal story. I grew up in Colorado. A lot of my childhood was spent hunting and fishing and four-wheeling in the Colorado Mountains, and I spent my formative years in Rocky Ford, an agricultural community in the lower Arkansas Valley. In the late seventies and early eighties, when farmers and ranchers were in huge financial trouble, they sold their water rights to the city of Aurora. There is an area bordered on the west by Highway seventy-one, on the north by Interstate seventy, on the east by the Kansas State border, and on the south by Highway fifty, that is equal to about sixty-four thousand square miles of ag land that grew sugar beets, millet, wheat, alfalfa, and lots and lots and lots of cattle. The majority of that land is dead empty today. There is nothing there, and there is no way to make a living on that land. The western slope of Colorado, the places where I spent a lot of my childhood, are is the scene of some of the most comprehensive or most dense fracking happening in the western part of this country. And if you go on the western slope today, you can see from Interstate seventy, miles and miles and miles of dead forest. The water table has absolutely been destroyed in many parts of Colorado by privatizing, commodifying water. I agree with Commissioner Brown, that's what we're looking at. Our county is four thousand square miles, and I ask you to think about the unintended consequences of sending two billion gallons of water out of the county and what that might make the county look like. Second, the cap entity was created for a specific purpose. This amended JPA agreement would change that purpose entirely, giving the cap entity the de facto authorization to become a regional water authority through this language on page three, and I quote, "for the purpose of developing other water utilization alternatives to meet water supply demands in the southwest planning region of New Mexico." And once that water gets to deming, it can be traded on the open market and go absolutely anywhere. Without significant input by key stakeholders because the cap was not created for this purpose. There are dozens of reasons why we should not allow this to happen, but the most important one, in my opinion, is that we would be abdicating our responsibility to the citizens of Grant County by giving the authority to buy and sell our future water security to an organization that is already burning through money with nothing concrete to show for it, has a reputation for violating the Open Meetings Act, minimal accountability to the public, and the authority to self-select new members. Imagine what the unintended consequences of that could potentially look like. I think the first thing, if we're going to consider amending the JPA, one of the first things that we should consider is asking to have the regional water, the regional water plan fully funded, and to limit what the capacity is of the cap entity to investigation only. This agreement does not do that. It gives them full authority to negotiate away this water on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, as I sat in this meeting on Tuesday, I think I understood Mr. Gutierrez to say, he referenced to page four. Unfortunately, I had loaned my document to someone else to look at, and I couldn't reference it then, but now I am. And I think Mr. Brown's correct, it's several places in here. So, I'm looking at two purposes, allow the New Mexico cap entity to investigate. So, that was brought up in this meeting. But it also says, "and/or obtain through lease, purchase, or other transfer mechanism" the right to. And so, I feel like I either wasn't paying attention, or I didn't get the whole story. So, now, I'm wondering, what is the urgency of this? And can we have some more time to get some questions answered?
Yeah, we can go ahead and ask. We can all, in favor?
I'd be in favor of that. I've got, I just have some questions. And I do want to say, other than that, that Freeport Matt Moran didn't initiate this conversation, and they also seem a little bit skeptical, and I just talked to someone who I would say is a senior official, they seem a little bit skeptical to even get involved in this. I don't think they want the negative news, so I have some more questions I'd like to get answered, I'd like to table it.
Okay. No, that's good. No? Okay. So, I would accept a motion.
I move that we table this, too.
Is a motion to table?
I'll second.
Is a motion to table with a proper second? All those in favor, say a five, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Resolutions, approve or disapprove resolution authorizing and approving the submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval for the New Mexico Finance Authority for Asset Management Plan?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize, approve resolution R seventeen twenty-eight, authorizing and approving the submission of a completed application for financial assistance to the NMFA.
Second? Is a motion is second to approve R seventeen twenty-eight? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution R seventeen twenty-nine? A resolution amending and amending the approved adopted budget for fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand sixteen, and for county purpose in the county of Grant County's Silver City, New Mexico Transferring and Appropriation Funds. Linda went through those moving, the money that was moved around. Is there any discussion?
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the resolution number R seventeen twenty-nine.
I'll second. Is a motion is second to approve R seventeen twenty-nine? Discussion, please. Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Here's the long one. Approve or disapprove resolution R seventeen thirty, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement between Grant County and the New Mexico Finance Authority in the principal amount of forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars for the purpose of financing a road improver project for Fleming Take Road, Wind Canyon Estates subdivision community area improvement district, and paying a loan processing fee, and evidencing the special land obligation of the government unit to repay the principal amount of forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars, together with interest, therein providing the pledge payment of the principal and interest due under the loan agreement solely from the third increment of Grant County grocery receipts, tax revenues imposed pursuant to section seven dash twenty E dash nine, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. And I won't read that again.
Can we approve resolution number R seventeen dash thirty?
Is a motion is second to approve R seventeen thirty? Any discussion on it, motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, approve or disapprove resolution R seventeen thirty-one? A resolution authorizing the submission of an application for airport aid to the Federal Aviation Administration, obligation of sponsor, matching funds, and authorization to accept resulting grant offers and the execution of contract documents for the following project to install an emergency generator at the Grant County Airport. We went over that on Tuesday also. Mr. Chairman, we approve the resolution number? R seventeen thirty-one.
I'll second.
There's a motion is second to approve R seventeen thirty-one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution R seventeen thirty-two? A notice of intent to consider an ordinance authorizing the operation of highway motor vehicles on streets or highways owned and controlled by Grant County. Commissioner Edwards, you have some amendments you would like to make to that order?
Do I look like a deer in headlights?
Yeah.
I was not aware that I needed to have that ready today.
Yeah, this would be it.
Do they have to be specific? Because I can give a general overview. My apologies.
Let me ask, let me ask counsel.
To commissioners and to the audience, I was not aware that I had to have those ready today. I'm sorry.
Okay, let me ask counsel. I know Commissioner Edwards wants to add some language to that ordinance. Would we have to go another thirty days?
We can make changes in this at any time. This is just a draft right now, so any time up to the day that we adopt it, we could be making changes. You could make changes at that meeting. You could say, "I will adopt this with this amendment." So, it's fine for Commissioner Edwards to come by and discuss those changes with me.
I thought I was clear with that, sir.
I'm happy to provide you a draft in advance with those changes, if you'd like that.
Okay. Well, I have been working on those changes. I'm sorry, it just wasn't on.
There's no requirement that it has to be.
Sounds good. Well, in that case, I would accept a motion on R seventeen thirty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution R seventeen dash thirty-two, notice of intent to consider.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion is second to approve R seventeen thirty-two. All those in favor? Anyone in the house have discussion? Sure.
This was just my opportunity actually to do, but Commissioner Edmonds is earlier.
I think it's frequently the case, we hear public input, and it doesn't affect us. Certainly, we generally consider these issues a lot already. That is true for this one. I've thought about this resolution a lot, and yet I really want to thank Ms. Fugali and Mr. Rankin, who left further additions to my thinking, which have actually given me pause about this. So, I look forward to seeing what resolutions, what amendments you are going to introduce. I'm very concerned about this being blanket authorization. I think it's appropriate in some instances and not others, and we need to delineate those instances. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Sorry about that. Is there any discussion? None? All those in favor, say a five, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Bids and requests for proposals, approve or disapprove bid B seventeen oh one, digital sign for the Grant County Veterans Business Conference Center. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this item also.
Can't table a bid.
It's a bid, so I have to.
It's either up or down.
It's either up or down.
Further motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the number B seventeen oh one, being that they did meet all the criteria that we put out as a county.
I'll second that motion. Discussion?
What I was hoping to ask is whether we could approve this contingent on an agreement with Western to pay half of the upfront cost, not including the ACE hardware sign.
I will change my amendment to include that in my motion.
Okay. In that case, I think it has the potential to be cost-effective. I think without that, we're really throwing good money after that.
I totally agree. We need to have a signed agreement with Joe.
And that amendment would include cost of running power to the sign, or they're paying for having the sign?
No, that you pay for having the sign.
And by the way, Mr. Large provided me additional information after our last meeting.
So, what does it cost?
It's a hundred and twenty volts, not two forty single phase, and they're estimating eighteen hours of usage a day, not twenty-four, so it comes to four thousand five hundred a year.
I think we can make that up easily in advertising.
And perhaps we could charge extra to the event planners for the chance to use this sign.
It's a Verizon fee.
Bingo. But let's get in the business of Verizon fees. They're popular, we could be too.
I think you ought to incentivize somebody to sell the advertising.
Right. But that's not really for here. It's not really for this topic.
I have a couple of questions, because I was, I was not able to hear most of this discussion.
You know, we could tell that, because you'd go, "Burn it down." You'd go, "Oh, resolution."
Well, and she's trying to actually find more on the way.
She was trying to put the phone under the table and whisper to you. We had a heck of a good time here.
And you're there.
I thought I used Billy last month.
So, um...
Was it that bad, my head?
Well, and I would just, I would just say that after trying to listen to that for two hours, it just feels like somebody has just been feeding you on your ears for...
If you use headphones, it's not nearly as bad.
Okay. No, next time. So, I would like to know, Commissioner Billings, if you would share, please, why you wanted to table, since I missed the conversation. And then the other thing that I missed was whether there was a possibility that the sign could be run on solar power. So, could there be a...
I'm skeptical as to whether this, I know it's only now a sixty thousand dollar investment plus the cost to run power, plus the, how much, forty-five hundred a year?
Forty-five hundred for power, yeah. That's for electricity per year.
Yeah, so what I was talking about is the cost of running power to the sign, which may be six thousand dollars? Mr. Large?
Sorry.
The cost of power to run power to the sign?
Right now, it could be, we're waiting on another Chicago, Washington block.
Does that include an eight thousand installation setup fee? Can you power to that sign?
Commissioner, so currently, we've got a conduit that was already in the ground that runs to it, but it's not large enough for us to be able to run the span, so we do have to put in another power source. So, we're waiting for bids or quotes on that. There, I don't really know that, since we're still waiting on one, if we should be discussing what these prices are at this point. So, that is, that is why we have an additional cost to get the power in. We had a cost to run power no matter what, but all the electricians that looked at it, the conduit's not large enough for the run from the building all the way out to it, so we just have to bring in another meter loop to it.
So, do you have the right of power whether or not you install this sign?
We, well, because we're going to have to do the ACE hardware sign as part of our agreement with ACE, and that does require a backlit, so either way, yes, we do have to run the power.
But that backlit is the seventy-two gauge.
Exactly.
So, that conduit is probably big.
It may be, yes. We have not asked the electricians that one yet.
I just wondered if we could buy some time to make the decision on this sign, depending on whether that would be the added cost of running conduit. I'm having a hard time in my mind justifying the cost of this sign and whether it will increase revenue at the conference center enough to pay for itself.
So, the bid was to install the sign as we bid it out, was to install the sign, the ACE hardware, that part was not a part of the bid. You're only approving this.
Right. So, if we approve this, then we'll have that extra cost. So, by approving this, we're also in, if there's an unknown extra encumbered cost, that's...
I'd also like to make another comment. I, you know, unfortunately, we inherited this building, and it was purchased quite a while back. And I know since we've sat on this board, we've tried to make the best decisions possible to, to create a beautiful building and get a building that can be used by the community to the fullest. And if we're going to try to bring in different types of concerts, comedians, people coming in to use this building, I think this is a great tool to not only show what we've got, but to lure the people in that are here within our community. I, I just, I just feel that this is something we inherited, but there's something we've got to make the best out of, you know? Some people inherit a home from grandmother... out of, you know, some people inherit a, a, a home from grandmother, but they don't just, uh, turn around and, and let it rot, they turn around and try and make the best out of it and, uh, and sell it for a gain, although we're not selling this place, hey, somebody wants to buy it, let us know, but, since we are stuck with this building, okay, we take, we do need to make the best out of it, and it, it has turned out to be a beautiful building, and it's been used a lot, not only by government, government agencies, but by people that have been renting it, and we have had, had none, I have had nothing but great comments about that building, so, I mean, we gotta make the best of what we've got.
All righty.
So, my apologies, but since I missed most of the conversation on Tuesday, I may be asking questions that have already been answered, um, is this, is the function of this sign going to be similar to the one that Western has on Watts Hall where we can put pictures of the community, pictures of the Clay Festival, you know, that sort of thing, um, and we could theoretically advertise anything that's happening in the community on it, I mean, they, you know, they do all kinds of different things with their sign, um, football games, you know, we would be able to do all of that kind of stuff with this sign?
Yes.
And, um, would the, getting the larger conduit to the sign involve trenching the parking lot?
Thank you, uh, Chairman, Commissioner Eric, um, the, we cannot get larger conduit, um, in the existing, uh, I mean, we could, but that, that would, exactly that, we would have to tear up the whole parking lot, right now, what we're looking at is just bringing it from the existing, uh, power poles that are next to the highway, and, and would be coming down underground, um, and it would go underneath the, uh, was that the east entrance?
Yes. Okay, and I just, I wanted to make sure we weren't talking about trenching the parking lot, so, okay. And then, finally, um, have we explored, and I don't know enough about solar to know, you know, if this would work, but have we explored the possibility of there being a solar panel on the top of the sign that would run it, and does anybody, can anybody tell me like how many watts a panel has, or, you know, see, I don't know that part, so if it need, if it needed forty-two panels, obviously, that wouldn't work, but I just wanted to know if we had explored that possibility, since it's right up there by the sun.
So, well, you're figuring that out. I would like to ask, uh, Kevin to talk about the safety, uh, uses of that sign, if you don't mind, Kevin, going through those wires.
If there's, um, something happens in the community such as another wildfire like we had in the past, indoor flooding, or even amber alerts, um, you know, we don't have the access of, of doing amber alerts through television and stuff, only state police can do that, but it may give us access to where something happens in the community, whether it be an amber alert, um, a senior citizen with Alzheimer's or dementia, um, we could possibly utilize that to get the assistance from the public to, um, for their help, and also to warn them that there's, um, incoming danger to their areas.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to mention that the last study that I saw, there was over eighteen thousand cars passing through that intersection every single day, so that's a lot of information being put out to the community, so, I mean, I just thought I'd mention that.
I have to give you a number of square feet, and it's not good.
Okay.
Seven hundred and twenty square feet, you get about twelve watts per square foot of solar panel, and we need eight thousand some watts to run seventy-two amps at one twenty volts. So that'd be about forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's some money, that would be an enormous installation, yeah.
Or ten years of operational use to pay.
We need to be able to run the whole conference center.
Yes, right, yeah, we do.
But that's the key, and that's what, I mean, that's what we were shooting for in the last year.
And eventually, we'll do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to point out that, um, County Manager Webb, um, informed me this morning, this doesn't come out of the operational funds, it comes out of construction fund, but still, the caution I have is that those construction funds could be used for, and I had a hard time hearing you on the phone, but you said Tucasa?
Those, those funds are intended for three purposes, the renovation of the conference center, the renovation of the courthouse, and the construction of a continuum of care otherwise known as Tucasa, they must be utilized for those three purposes.
See, so that, that funding was earmarked for that.
Right, but there are, and, and that's, that's correct, and, and I believe, I, I agree with what you said, you've got a marvelous facility out there, but I'm just issuing caution that at some point, we're gonna have to start looking at expenditures there, because we've got the air conditioners that we've had trouble with, now more air conditioners that we're having trouble with, uh, there is a need evidently for a sound system, I don't know if we're gonna consider that or not, but if, if we go for this sign, I'm gonna be less likely to consider the sound system, so I hope that these items have been prioritized, because when we start running in from sixty thousand to eighty to two hundred thousand, I'm just gonna really start, start wanting to put the brakes on this, at some point, we just have to say, um, no, we, we can't be dumping more money into this when there's, when we're telling everybody else in the county, no, we don't have enough money for this, we don't have enough money for that, and we're putting in it.
Right, the next one, saying those, that's earmarked for those three projects only, the courthouse is done, that's completed, Tucasa is on budget, so.
That's correct, yeah.
So, I do have one more question then, um, I, so, we know that there are certain things, um, at the convention center that weren't done well or correctly initially, um, and some of that is around, um, the sound in some of the rooms, some of it is around things like having to walk to the other end of the bathroom to get to the paper towel holder, you know, those sorts of things, and so, my question would be, if we spend this hundred and thirty thousand dollars, whatever it is, on this sign, is there still money to address those issues inside the building that will affect our success, our future success in booking it, so in other words, if, you know, if we book an event in one of those rooms and, you know, they can't hear anything, um, and so they never come back, then, you know, we've sort of cut off our nose to spider face, so, do we have, is there the funding available to fix those things as well, including the sound system that we need?
That's what we're looking into, so I have an original quote for the baffling to go on the walls to, um, damper some of the echo in those buildings, or in, in those two rooms, I did not like the cost, I thought it was extremely high, so that's why it's taking so long to get that fixed, just because we're looking for lower cost alternatives to fix that issue, because that has been the complaint by everyone that's used those rooms thus far, so we have to fix that for the very reasons that Commissioner Edwards just mentioned, they're not gonna come back, um, second of all, yes, there needs to be audiovisual and sound in there, because that's what they're paying for, um, we can't expect someone to come in and bring their own sound system and their own audiovisual equipment, we've started piecing some of that together with, um, audiovisual, um, Scott and I are working on some different, um, uh, working with some different contractors, looking at the lowest cost, most efficient way to provide sound in there, looking at portable options that can be moved from room to room, um, but I do feel that, yes, we do have the funds available to address those concerns, there is a, um, I wouldn't call it substantial, I think there's an adequate fund balance in that fund to take care of those issues, um, to bring this facility up to where it is usable for, for those who are leasing it.
You're talking about the funds in that fund with those three things, okay.
Yes, well, not with those three things, no, we have a fund that is specific to the conference center, um, that has a fund balance.
Okay.
So there, there are monies there, it's not like we're tapping into the general fund, there are monies to accomplish that, and, um, and Commissioner Billings, I understand your concern, and you can ask any elected official in department ahead, I'm very, very cautious about expenditures, and they're not happy with me at all right now, because I don't want to spend any money that we absolutely do not have to spend, because this county is, isn't, in, in a tight spot in several different areas, so we are exploring all of our options and trying to be very diligent in how we spend our money moving forward.
And I've heard many examples of what you're talking about, I appreciate that.
These are weird. So we do have a motion on the floor that has been seconded to approve B seventeen oh one, is there further discussion?
You said you had come up.
I do, I'm just waiting to the end, so I'm gonna use this as a Pottery Barn analogy, if we don't give that conference center every tool possible to succeed, and we've listed most of them here today, it will fail, and it's gonna be an epic failure, because it's not gonna be a failure of sixty thousand dollars, it's gonna be a failure of six million dollars, uh, Commissioner Ramos is absolutely right, we inherited a four million dollar spend that was unusable, we did choose to spend a couple of million dollars on it to make it usable, it is usable, there's some things that need to be changed, but we will be remiss if we do not give this conference center every tool possible to succeed, and it will be on us, when we break it, we're gonna own it, so at that time, uh, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, say five, say an aye.
Aye.
Nays?
I said aye.
No nays, unanimous.
Did you say aye instead?
Oh, you did, excuse me.
That's a yes vote.
Four, it is, if there's only three of us, um, okay, approve or disapprove bid B sixteen eleven, install emergency generator at the Grant County Airport, this is much easier, we only pay for two and a half percent events, however, I think generators are very expensive.
Especially this one.
So, this, this goes with the earlier, um, thing that we're, um, borrowing money to do, correct, it's all part of the same time-dated way of doing it.
Is the paragraph that long, you wanna go read it again?
No, I thought you did a fine job, uh, I'll, uh, I'll move that we approve bid number B sixteen dash eleven.
Motion?
Second.
And a second to approve B sixteen eleven, any discussion? All those in favor, say five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. R. Approve or disapprove RFP seventeen oh one, the Grant County Advisory Services, these are the services that we potentially will hire to help the commission, uh, do analysis on the hospital, to one, make sure that it is being run at optimum, two, to make sure they can be standalone, and three, to give us all options of standalone, uh, situations it could be operated in, whether it be a five oh one C three, whether it be run like it is, whether we run in a hospital district, or whether or not we need management, uh, services, or whether or not we need to partner with outside entities.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RFP seventeen dash oh one, Grant County Advisory Services.
I'll say it. Uh, you need to make-
For Juniper Advisory.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start off by saying thank you for participating and, and to, to, first of all, thank you for, for participating to Brett Caston, Commissioner Caston, and Commissioner Alicia Edwards for taking the time and looking through, through this information and, and putting together a great point system, so we appreciate you for taking the time to do that.
I agree. Thank you, Brett, uh, Manager Webb was right there in the middle of it also.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say five, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Elected officials' reports, Kevin, do you have anything to do?
Keep breathing. Up loud. Okay, um, I just, um, last month was an extremely busy month, and, um, can you hear me now? June was an extremely busy month, and, um, we, um, had seven hundred and thirteen calls for service in June, we took a hundred and fifty-six reports, and, um, investigated eleven, um, vehicle crashes, we are currently, um, going through the interview process to try and fill a position for our court security, and we're, um, doing interviews for, for prospective deputies, and so we're, um, down on our resources, we're doing okay, and I want to thank all of our staff for all the hard work and, um, helping us get through the, um, shortages of personnel.
Going in for the sheriff under the difficult times, I know you're up to the task. Steve, long time no see, how you doing, man?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, first off, I'd like to thank my staff for really, uh, keeping my tail out, out of the crack, because they've done an excellent job, uh, in trying times, and, uh, they've collected, uh, a hundred and eight thousand eight nineteen forty-one for the general fund, and fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight forty-six for the debt service, um, they were also responsible for sending out, I put in your packet, the courtesy letter that we mailed out back in May, we mailed out three hundred and eighty courtesy letters, and those were letters to people that were only in, in, uh, they were, they're, they have the fourteen taxes, fifteen taxes, and sixteen taxes, uh, passed due, they were delinquent, and out of those three hundred and eighty, we were actually able, people responded, two hundred and seventy-four people, taxpayers responded, so we saved them thirty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in the cost of state fees, unfor, unfortunately, a hundred and six people did not respond, then they got the hundred and twenty-five dollar cost to state fee for thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars added to their tax bill, the, the delinquent tax notice that we sent up to the state included a hundred and thirty-one names and properties, um, twenty-five of the, of the hundred and thirty-one had more than the twenty-fourteen taxes due, so that's why the difference in the hundred and thirty-one and the hundred and six that didn't respond, so, of that total, uh, at that point in time, the fees totaled a hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and twenty-one thirty-eight, so we will have taxes of a hundred eleven thousand five eighty-nine twelve, that, the, eventually, when they get collected, we will collect that and distribute to all the entities, but the state will collect not less than forty-eight thousand seven thirty-two twenty-six for that, for this tax year, plus any continuing accruing penalty and interest, so, you know, that's, um, if there's any questions or comments? I do too, but not about this particularly.
Um, uh, Steve, thank you for, um, your report and for doing all this work on these , um, delinquent taxpayers, I just have a clarified question, when you say they responded, do you mean they paid?
They paid.
Um, and did they pay all that they owed, or just the, primarily, just the one year they needed to keep from the-
It's all, it was all mixed, the majority only paid the fourteens.
Okay.
To keep them from going on the list, but there were several, I mean, I would say probably twenty and twenty-five percent that actually were, oh gosh, I didn't even know I hadn't paid my taxes, and they came in and paid current, they, they brought it up and paid in full, so.
No, Steve, I had a constituent call, and this is a question just to clarify my knowledge, I had a constituent call and talk about, he bought some property in the, in the sale, and his question was, does the county ever take title of that property when they, and I told him they did not, I was hoping I was right, I was good, I always liked it when I have a scientific, wild-ass guess, but, um, because, I guess he bought a piece that, one, had a lean, a solid waist lean, and I don't know why they had a solid waist lean, because they apparently hadn't hauled off any of their trash in years, and he was thinking that was the county's responsibility to do all that, and to relieve, relieve them of the lean, but by the time I got through talking to him, all the way from Hurley to Dimming yesterday, I finally convinced him to call Misha. Okay? It took you that long? He was very persistent that this was a, a county, and the county dropped the ball, so, that was my question, so I just wanted to know if we, if we ever took title.
Interestingly enough, though, there is that misconception, uh, about the solid waists, I mean, Ted must get twenty or thirty calls every time he sends a bill out, a day, not just twenty, thirty overall. just twenty, thirty overall. I don't live there, nobody lives there, we haven't been there, it's not for tax, it's not for trash, trash collection. It's for the operation of the landfill.
That's right.
Everybody in the county pays five dollars and twenty-five cents a month for that, and the people that live within municipalities, they're billed by the municipality for their trash. It is not for the collection, it's strictly for the operation of the landfill.
Every inhabitable dwelling pays five dollars and twenty-five cents.
I have a comment on this. Somehow I've managed to make it to July without saying this. When that fee got passed by this commission, yeah, not you individuals, by this body, this august body we all sit on now, they declared it a usage fee, a use fee, and because it's a use fee and not a tax, we pay tax on the use fee, which every single time I pay my bill, I put tax, rental tax plus tax on tax, because that's what it is. And you just elucidated the reasons, right? You just said, doesn't matter if you use it or not, you have to pay it. To me, I understand the need for it, we had to collect the money, but it's a tax, and we should call the tax, and we should stop taxing the tax. Fair, I've said it.
Apparently he hates pay tax.
On taxes. I don't mind paying the taxes, going to a good purpose. Yeah, let's go with it. Right. Yes. The tax sales are conducted by the state of New Mexico and Property Tax Division, and they're the ones that issue the deeds to the people once they, uh, purchase the property at the tax sale. So that's, that's what the process goes. We never have anything to do with that, it's all done by them, which they, they just, a couple of weeks ago, sent us the check for the, for our proceeds and, uh, for the deeds, they issued the deeds and they were, it's, they were mailed to the individuals. The individuals need to come in and record them with the county clerk's office. A lot of people fail to do that, and, uh, they don't know why they're not getting a tax bill, but they've never recorded the deed from the state. To record the deed from the state, they also need to make sure that they're caught up with all the liens and everything else. It might be outstanding liens for other reasons as well, so.
Yeah, that's one.
Okay? Okay, thank you.
Marissa?
Hi, Mr. Manager. Um, the mechanic techs, we do have, um, a special bond election currently going on for the Kobe School District. Early absentee does begin tomorrow, which is Friday the twenty-first, from eight to five, Monday through Friday, um, and that early voting does continue going until August eleventh. Um, election day is August fifteenth. Uh, if anybody does have any questions, please contact our office.
Who needs a bomb?
Um, it has to do, exactly. It has to do with funding of the rebuilding of schools, um, the renewal, yes.
How did you? Okay, so that's all the elected, uh, the elected officials I see. Um, manager still has nothing today, okay? Then we'll start on this side today.
The hospital report.
The hospital report?
Yeah, normally, uh, the CEO from the hospital's here.
I was gonna question why she didn't come, but really she needs to be here next time on Tuesday, yeah.
Okay, so, what's that?
We extended the invitation, and we'll do it again.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll, then we'll write a letter.
On that subject, it seems to me, really the person who's accountable to us is the chair of the board.
He probably can't give the report that we actually want.
No, I agree, but as far as, so they ship up legitimate authority, I think the one we can demand is the chair of the board, and the other should be here.
So you extended the invitation to her, to Kathy or to Jeremy?
To Kathy, yeah, and a brief meeting that we had explained that.
Because I also extended, I did also extend that.
And I did, you know, each of you asking if there's anything in particular that you would like for her to report on, different than the previous CEO, and I heard that from one of you. So if there's something in particular that you want, she did ask that. What, what did you want her to report on specifically? What information did you want?
And you did your background, right? One of them, okay.
Um, but I, I will follow up with her, and, um, just to give her the benefit of the doubt, she's had her hands full since she's been here.
Wow. So, you know, the other thing that we used to get from the hospital, and we didn't get it until after their, until after their meeting, but we always got financials and their compliance report to review, uh, so we got it at the beginning of the month, so we could have it to ask questions about their previous, their past month. And I think about, about the time you guys came on, we quit getting that stuff, so, I thought time when the Verlops came along with it.
Yep.
So we would need to request that again. And I don't want it electronically, I want it paper. I mean, they can send it by email so I can print it, but I don't want it on something I have to view on a.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, any other? Okay, Commissioner Edwards, any report today?
I don't have anything today.
All right, Commissioner Billings?
Uh, yeah, back on the subject of the hospital, we had, uh, the Board of Trustees, not we, sorry, Board of Trustees had a meeting here on Monday night, um, and it just speaks loudly to me of the need for public bodies to hear the constituents, not because, uh, there might be some mob mentality, but to actually listen to what they're saying, and, and to consider if there is anything of value in what they're saying. And I think that, I'm disappointed, because I think, not just at that meeting, but at previous meetings, the Board of Trustees, uh, heard some valuable input from the community that could have been acted on, and they chose not to do so. Uh, and I know there's, I'm not as disappointed as a lot of the cancer patients, one of whom asked me to, um, to mention her name today and tell you a little bit about her story, even though she's been very outspoken and eloquently on her own, and that is Nancy Thomas, who I have, uh, lived in this community with for a long time, but never knew her until very recently. I knew her husband, and I know her sister, who she's traveling with at this very moment. Um, her sister has a business in Glenwood, we've rented cabins from her, my wife and I stayed with her one time, that's how I know her. She's a cancer patient now, and she's traveling to Albuquerque because her, the service for her, uh, treatment is not available here at this time. So the, um, Mrs. Thomas is doing the driving, even though she has very limited peripheral vision, she's using her sister's eyes to get to Albuquerque, that was yesterday, and they're getting treatment today. And I, I think that's just one example of how we are, this system has put people at risk with not having the forethought of a transition. This, uh, it, we've, uh, it's been in the planning process to change providers at the cancer center for maybe years now, and, uh, and, and so I would have thought that there, a transition, uh, would have been thought out. When, uh, New Mexico Cancer Center was sent, uh, notice in January that the last day would be this week, that transition process should have, they should have hammered out the details of that. Uh, and I could go on for an hour, as we did in the previous meetings, and I refer you to the, uh, Grant County, the beat and the press, excellent articles, I think that paints it out pretty well. Uh, I'm still getting calls, uh, people still want answers, and this, we're not just gonna bury this, as was, as tried to do in the, uh, this morning, in Heeler Regional's newsletter on their website, uh, and I would caution Heeler Regional to not try to place blame as they did on their website. I think, uh, they need to move forward, while at the same time, I think we need to look back and see what happens, so this never happens again. And I want to say one more thing about the hospital, I had, uh, I support the caregivers there and, and that Heeler Regional in general, so I hope no one construes my criticism of the Board of Trustees as lack of support for the hospital, because this is different. I spent an unscheduled twenty-six hours there the other day because of a faulty EKG reading that landed me in the hospital, and I got nothing but the best care there. It's, I think that he said it's a four-star hospital, I give it five stars, really good care. Every one that attended, I mean, probably over twenty of them, just excellent service. Uh, I have no complaint about the, the people who are working in the trenches of the hospital. Uh, I think you guys are waiting for me to hurry.
Yeah.
So I have a, a bunch of other questions that I'll, I'll be asking, um, because I don't think they're, it's not an emergency at this, at this point, because the decision's already been made, so I will ask these for some of the, the people that have asked me. Um, I'd also like to say that for everyone who's still here, and that, and you need to hold me to this too, we need factual information from our elected officers, we need factual information, because if we get, um, if we get, and from several, we've gotten information that I found out later is not factual, we need it from the commissioners, so if I'm saying something that's not factual, please approach me or any of the commissioners to say, what you said was not exactly factual because of this. And even, even I appreciate factual comments from the constituents who come, because if they give us something that's not factual, they get us, uh, you know, it can be, it can be a sidetrack to what's even important for them. And we heard some, in public comment this morning, we heard some really good factual comments, and we heard some distraction, uh, that's, that I would question was factual. I can, I think, I was a former, recently former chairman of the Grant County Area Categorers, my son is chairman of that organization now. I can pretty well tell you that ranchers do not want a slaughterhouse in Grant County. Um, it's just, that's just fact. And so when you throw out things like that, and then also it'd be good if, before you speak, if you know the difference between a slaughterhouse and a dairy. A slaughterhouse is where you prepare beef for consumption. A dairy is, uh, for people who don't know, there's a little bit of a rift between beef producers and dairy producers. We're a little bit jealous of the huge subsidies the dairy's gotten over the years, so, so as you drive south towards El Paso and you smell that smell, that's not beef production, that's milk production, and it's, uh, that's just a personal rant there. It's, that's not a slaughterhouse, that's a dairy. Um, I, uh, I don't think beef production is a drain on the economy. The figures I have is that Grant County beef production, um, provides somewhere around a fifty million dollar economic impact annually to the state of New Mexico. Uh, I'm not, I, I, I think that the person that made that comment, um, gave, also gave some very factual and useful information, but, um, anyhow. Um, and then to the, uh, Grant County assessor's comments the other day, I may have misconstrued those, but I think, uh, I just want to make it clear that ranchers do not conspire with the state taxation and revenue to get special tax breaks on their cattle. We, just one operation, over-report our cattle every year. Um, I guarantee you, if, uh, the assessor went and counted our cattle's right, right now, he would, our cattle, he would find that we actually over-reported, and, um, that's on numbers. Now, on the cattle prices, there was an indication that prices haven't dropped, prices have indeed dropped, um, and right about twenty-one, twenty-two percent, so I trust, uh, those numbers pretty good. The thing is, price doesn't just affect the ranchers, um, it's not incremental to, so let's say that the price has dropped twenty percent year, year beef prices, that doesn't just affect our income, uh, twenty-two percent, that, that, that twenty-two percent extra is, you know what I'm trying to say? That twenty-two percent extra.
That means it's not the same as the last one.
Right. So, so with that twenty-two percent extra beef price, we are, we can make significant money. With, uh, with the twenty-two percent drop, we actually end up losing money. Still, while individual ranchers may lose money, the economic impact to the area is still great, because we're spending, that means we're just spending everything we make. Um, so, uh, let's see, I think that's probably, I think I'm out of time, so.
You don't, you don't have a title in it. Now you, you do.
It brings me exactly to the point I was gonna make. Uh, no, when, when I decided to run for this office, uh, probably the only, my, my main practical goal that I thought I could actually achieve, uh, was to see this commission engage in the kind of discussion we have engaged in. And I want to thank the chair. I think you've done an excellent job of treating everybody fairly, of creating an atmosphere of respect. I have vehemently disagreed with some decisions we've made, and I know you've disagreed with some positions I've taken, and yet I felt we've been able to discuss them, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity. We as a whole, you as a chair, have extended to the public, uh, to offer their comments again in a respectful way. Uh, of course, we prefer facts over, uh, non-facts or alternative facts, uh, and I look forward to getting more of those. I really appreciate hearing the things you have to say, and if anything, I would encourage more, I'd love to hear more, uh, from other commissioners, not just because I don't like being the one who talks the most, but because I really do want to hear the perspectives you have. So, um, thank you for, uh, creating that atmosphere and maintaining it, I look forward to, to more of the same.
Appreciate the comment, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'd first of all, I'd like to mention an email that we, I got from, uh, a gentleman that works for, for the cancer center, and he decided to stick around and, and work with the, with the new, uh, U and M facilitated business. And I'd like to say congratulations to him, because he stuck around for the right reason. He stuck around to take care of these, these patients that are very sick, and it kinda hit me in the heart when he sent that email, because I know a lot of people that just turned around and ran, and turned their backs on these people. And, you know, during all these conversations, we heard so much from the people that were losing their business and, and, and having to do away with it because of choices that were made, and they said they were there for the people, and for the people that were sick, and the people that were their patients for so many years, and yet they turned around and just left. You know, they, they made a choice, um, they could have stuck around and, and attended to these people through this new organization, or try to figure out a way to, to help out. You know, that's disrespectful in my book, um, especially when these people are so, so sick, and, and I talked, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little choked up, because I, I talked to one of a, a good friend of mine that's actually going there, and, uh, she's, we graduated together, and I, I, I see her now, and, and she's very ill, and I feel bad about it, but, you know, things do happen when it comes to government entities and choices and RFPs and what have you, and sometimes we have no control over the way things work, and we have no control over the law. But when you do have control over sticking around and taking care of these sick people, you know, that's, uh, that, that's a choice you gotta make deep in your heart. Um, I was also excited to hear from another person that works there and stuck around, and, and I believe they got a six-dollar raise, you know, so I was really excited to hear about that. Um, you know, I'm hoping that things go well for the people that are there, and the people that could be hired through this new system. Um, I also wanted to, um, to tell the board, you know, we appreciate what you do. We might not agree with everything that is done at all times, but we appreciate that you don't get a pay, a penny for being there, and you do the best that you can with the knowledge that you've got. So I'd, I'd really like to thank the Board of Trustees for putting in all the time and effort for what's been going on, not only by, from, from bringing in, uh, the new administrator to dealing with this, with this RFP problem. Um, I also want to end this in a good note, I want to congratulate the ten, eleven-year-old All-Star Girls from Copper that won the state tournament this last week, that was pretty awesome. At, at that age group, people don't, that don't follow baseball or Little League, don't know this, but at that age group, it is really hard to be a state champion. And they breezed through everyone. I mean, they pretty much won every game by ten-run rule, so that was pretty awesome. That was very, very awesome. So, I mean, I, I- So, I mean, I, I had the privilege of coaching teams for 16 years and I never as a coach accomplished anything close to that, so hats off to them. I know how hard that is and, and that is just, that is pretty awesome. That's all I've got.
Okay. All right, um, I know that Grant County is perceived as kind of a backwardsy, not sophisticated, uh, place, but I'm going to tell you right now, you watch the TV and you watch the, the things that are going on in America and if the diverse group of people in the rest of America could sit down and work through their issues as well as these, this group of people does up here, we would not have one problem. I am blessed to have worked with some of the best commissioners in the state of New Mexico or anywhere in the United States and I truly do mean that. These guys do their due diligence, uh, they're not just yes men to me, you can tell that. Um, because we, we have butted heads on several things and I anticipate we'll do that for another 17 months. So, uh, that being said, I too agree that when you come to public input, it's not an advertisement for your, for your, uh, plight or, uh, group or whatever. It doesn't do you any good to point out, commissioners, you need to talk about policy and you need to have truth. Uh, you will get a lot further than that than if you, if you point me out for something I may have said 18 months ago, which I don't agree with anymore, uh, or I do, I don't know. Um, so we're probably not going to have public input from individuals who choose to point out individuals. That's just not, we, we take our, our jobs way too seriously from that. I don't think anybody would have a problem with that. So, that being said, I think we're going to go into executive session, uh, in accordance with NMSA 1978, 1015, 1H8. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. We're going to go into executive session.
There's a motion in a second to go into executive session. Can I get a roll call vote, Connie?
Commissioner Brown, are you aware you are entering into executive session?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Billings, are you aware that you are entering executive session?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramos, are you aware that you are entering into executive session? Chairman Caston, are you aware you are entering into executive session?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards, are you aware you are entering into executive session?
So we are now in executive session, we will adjourn immediately after executive session. We plan on taking no action when we come back out to adjourn.